I'm Agnes. I'm Agnes.
We'll call the meeting to order in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-80E, South Carolina Code 1987 as amended. All the media in the media area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer by Mr. Govan followed by Mr. Jeffords and our pledge.
Just by his... Father has again to be coming. As in your guidance and your direction. As we embark upon another meeting of the Darlington County School Board, we ask God that you would direct us as we make decisions that hopefully are in the best interest of our children and citizens of Darlington County. We ask that upon this meeting ending that you would provide us with traveling merchandise as we return back to our respective homes. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we have some... Before we get started at that, Dr. Newman?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew we had a guest with us tonight, Dr. Matthew Ferguson, who is the new superintendent of the Darlington County School District as of July 1st, but obviously he's been with us already coming into the house. Dr. Ferguson, would you stand up and be recognized, please? We're glad to have you. I can use all the help I can get for the next two months, but I know that as of July 1st, you will do a wonderful job. Dr. Ferguson, of course, is a native from Darlington County, spent his years in school in Darlington County, taught in Darlington County, was in administration with Darlington County, and is now with the State Department, serving all of South Carolina. So brings a wealth of experience with us, and I wish you nothing but the best, Dr. Ferguson, as you get started. Thank you for being with us tonight.
All right. And that moves us on to our citizens' comments. Please listen closely to our public content directives. The first 30 minutes of the monthly meeting will be set aside for three-minute input sessions for citizen participation. Participation will be approved on a first-come, first-talk basis as recorded on the log provided. Public input should be in the form of suggestions, information, or comments pertaining to programs, schools, or the school district. Based on legal advice of our council, comments should not be made either complimentary or critical, naming any student, school employee, administrator, or board member, as these matters are personnel matters that require an executive session. Speakers' comments will be received as... only as board information. So let's start out, we have Ms. Amber Turner.
My name is Amber Turner, and as a parent to two children that have and currently attend Southside Early Education Center, I would like to say that Southside is an important, stepping stone in our children's education. Not only does Southside staff instill the knowledge into our children, but they go above and beyond by providing love and care for our little ones. I, as a parent, can honestly say that the saying "It takes a village to raise a child" is 100% true. Southside has been my kids and my family's village through their entire education year, with a 5K right now. With the care and knowledge they have placed into my kids, they are selling in school tremendously. This reconstruction would be a travesty for our community as it would/could take the staff, they sell their jobs and go above and beyond our kids' way from what they have been called to do, which is share knowledge with our 5K kids and set them up for success for their learning future. Please take into account my words, a parent to two Southside kids, one prior and one current, a family member of the Southside family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Bridgette Braun?
Brown.
I'm sorry?
Bridgette Brown.
Brown, okay.
Board members, parents, and concerned citizens, I stand before you today not just as a parent, but as a mother whose child hangs in the balance. Two years ago, my son was struggling. He was in a private school in Hart School, and despite our best efforts, he wasn't making progress. He has developmental delays that require specialized attention. We were fortunate enough to discover Southside Early Childhood Center. It has been nothing short of a miracle for our family. At Southside, my son was welcomed into the developmental delay classroom within their exceptional education program. For the first time, he has thrived. He received the tailored support with specific strategies and the understanding that he desperately needed. Now, just after two short years, he is ready to be mainstreamed into a general education 4K classroom. Southside has given him the tools he needed to succeed. Southside Early Childhood Center is not just a school. It's a unique and vital community. It's a place where inclusion isn't just a buzzword. It's a reality. It's a place where children like mine, children with developmental delays, have the opportunity to break down the barriers, overcome challenges, and find their place in the world. At Southside, they don't feel separated or different. They are included, they are valued, and they are given a chance to learn alongside their typically developing peers. My concern, my deepest concern is this. What happens to kindergarten students currently in developmental delay classes who need the mainstreaming? What happens when kindergarten is moved back to zoned elementary schools? Southside provides a critical bridge. It provides inclusive environment that allows these children to transition successfully into general education. It allows them to learn social skills, to build confidence, to access curriculum in a way that meets their individual needs. It's not just about academics. It's about their whole development. Without Southside, these students will lose that bridge. They will lose the opportunity for seamless inclusion. They will be thrust into an environment that may not be equipped to provide the level of support and the same level of understanding, at the same level of inclusion that Southside offers. And let's not forget Southside's vision. Southside Early Childhood Center is an inclusive, nurturing community that provides a rigorous, engaging atmosphere that meets all students, where they are academically, socially, emotionally able to become future leaders. This isn't just a statement. It's what we have experienced firsthand. It's the promise that Southside delivers every single day to all of its students. So with this proposed relocation coming so close to the end of the school year, where does this leave our exceptional education students? Where does it leave the students who rely on Southside's unique approach to inclusion to prepare them for their next step? Where does it leave the students who seem to always be forgotten in these discussions? I urge you, I implore you, to reconsider their proposed relocation. Please do not take away this vital resource. Do not take away the opportunity for inclusion. Do not take away the hope that Southside Early Education Center provides for so many families, for so many children, for my son, for all other exceptional educational learners who call Southside home. Please consider the profound impact this decision will have on the most vulnerable students. Please don't forget them.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Hattie Hughes?
Madam Chair, board members. I am Hattie Hughes, retired from the Darlington County School District after 32 years, and have been retired 29 years. So you're probably wondering, what's my interest? My interest is the school is in my neighborhood, and it's been there since the 50s. We not only have the school in the neighborhood. You just heard a young lady say that we have students coming from all over, so we're now servicing students from all over the Hart School area. When I was told about this situation, I got on my telephone, and I surveyed my community because I did not want to be up here saying I was representing them when they didn't know what was going on, so I talked with them. And without exception, they all agreed that we need to keep the school open. One young lady said to me, "Boy, I hope they don't close it. That's the only school left that I attended." They closed Butler. They closed Sonavista. They closed Washington Street. There were only three elementary historically black schools in the area. Two of them are gone, there's only one left. We begged you to keep the school. We don't want to empty the building in our school. It would further tear down the community. It was closed once, and someone saw the need to open it again. So please don't close it a second time. We need to have it there, not only for the community, but to help those young children get ready for school. And I have been in there, so I'm just talking about what I've heard. I was on a school improvement council when they had one at the school. I used to be in and out so much, I would never pass without stopping. My husband would say, "You can't get school out of your blood, can you?" But I stopped that. I don't do it anymore, but please, please, we implore you not to close Southside's school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Hunter, and I cannot read...
Butler.
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 Buckner.
Buckner, okay. I apologize.
My name is Hunter Buckner, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Southside Early Childhood Center. Since learning about the possible transition of Southside's kindergarten program back to home elementary schools, I, along with the entire staff at Southside, have experienced a wave of uncertainty, confusion, and stress. I began my career at Southside as an instructional assistant right after college, armed only with a psychology degree and a lack of direction. My principal and the Southside staff welcomed me with open arms, creating an environment where I felt comfortable asking questions and seeking help. Southside truly knows no strangers. Everyone is welcome. As the year progressed, my principal recognized potential in me that I hadn't seen in myself. She encouraged me to join the Carolina CAP program, allowing me to work towards my teaching certificate while teaching for the next three years. Southside is a school that recognizes the potential in everyone and supports individuals every step of the way. As I conclude my third and final year in the Carolina CAP program, I am deeply grateful to everyone at Southside for their invaluable support throughout this journey. However, the news of this transition has brought immediate feelings of uncertainty and stress regarding my future position. As one of the newer teachers, I find myself questioning whether I'll be reassigned to a different school if this transition occurs. This is not a scenario I wish to face. I owe my career to Southside, and I cannot envision teaching anywhere else. I commute 40 minutes from Florence every day, not out of necessity, but because Southside is the best choice for me. I have declined teaching positions in Florence simply to remain part of a community that prioritizes my growth as an educator. Southside is more than just a school. We are a family. This potential transition threatens to dismantle the close-knit community we have built. It is imperative to consider the profound impact this decision will have on our collective spirit and the bonds we cherish. Thank you for considering the importance of keeping our Southside family intact.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Minister Jay Gallet?
Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair, board members, teachers, family, associates. My name is Minister Jay Gallet. I am a local minister. I am a resident. I am a taxpayer, and I am a proud grandparent of a current 4K student at Southside. I don't have a long dissertation to share. I would just simply like to know what... How does this benefit? How does this benefit the students? How does this benefit the teachers? How does this benefit the families? And how does this benefit Darlington County? God bless you.
Thank you. Carla Williams?
Hello. My name is Carla, and I'm here to speak on my son Kingston Matt Stuckey. And he was a first semester senior at Darlington High School. A tragic accident happened where he was playing with a gun, and it ricocheted and hit him, and he died. On the course of that, we didn't know how, you know, things was going to play out, so we just kind of waited. But under my understanding, um... I don't... From my understanding, Kingston probably wouldn't get a chance to get his name called for graduation or be recognized at graduation ceremony. And so I come to the board to ask, could we... So my son... Sorry. He was so close to graduating before his untimely death. He could not wait to graduate, and neither could I. He was my only child. Seeing him as a senior put so much... It put a big smile on my face. And everybody knew me. Everybody knew I was an advocate parent. I was one phone call away from anything or any situations. Kingston was also awesome and a respectful kid. To know him was to love him. I still have kids from the class writing a check on me, stopping to see me, and going to his grave and putting flowers on his burial site. As a major milestone with the class of 2025, someone is there helping me cope with my son not being able to experience it. He only has one deceased, one living grandmother, and me, and maybe two to three aunties. And it would mean so much to me if we can honor him on May 30th, 2025. I have so much else to write, but I think I'm done.
Can you understand? Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on with our agenda on our honors awards and recognitions. We have some perfect attendance awards. We have some South Carolina Beta Club awards, and we have some student leadership awards.
All right, so I believe, Mr. Shuler, are you doing our attendance? Or who is doing our attendance? Ms. Peterson, all right. Ms. Peterson, there you are, I'm sorry. You've got the folder in hand? We'll turn it over to you.
It is a delight to present this award to a young man who has demonstrated extraordinary dedication and commitment to achieving his goals. In fifth grade, he was recognized for five years of perfect attendance, again in eighth grade, and now 12th grade. During COVID, we all made adjustments. However, he persevered and proudly continued to attain... Attend classes virtually without missing a beat. Were there days that he didn't feel like attending? I'm quite sure there were. However, he continued because he knew what his goal was. A huge congratulations on achieving this goal. We would like his parents, grandparents, and principal to stand as we recognize Landon Thomas Fletcher for 12 years of perfect attendance at Hart School High School.
Here, shall I want to get up closer and get a better picture of him? You only get to this one time, and this is fine accomplishment. On that one, I'd just like to make a note. Both of these parents are also educators, and they've been educators in the Darlington County school system, so we... That's a part of the dedication there. Thank you.
Members of the board, on behalf of Dr. Newman, the student leadership team, and our principals, I have to report that 11 Darlington County School District students earned first-place honors at their respective Beta Club competitions through the South Carolina chapter of the National Beta Club. The National Beta Club is the largest independent nonprofit educational organization in the nation dedicated to promoting the ideals of academic achievement, character, service, and leadership among elementary and secondary school students. If the award recipients would come forward as their names are called, please. From the elementary division from Brockington Elementary School, first place for creative variety, Kaylin Durden. Principal Dr. Ada Sinde.
Take your picture.
I'd like you to wait till I get that.
Where is it?
Okay.
All right, so you get to stay here.
First place for drawing, Aubrey D. Cottigan.
I also want to get some pictures for the class. Congratulations, girls.
Good job.
In the middle school division from Darlington Middle School, we had two first-place winners in the premier performer junior dancer category, Caroline Caldwell and Linay McCray. In the senior division from Mayo High School for Math, Science, and Technology, we had an individual with two awards. First place in the state campaign skit and being elected to South Carolina Vice President of the Beta Club, Kayden Baker. First place for onsite painting division one, Amelia Flippin. First place for premier performer senior dancer, Zariah Spann. First place for premier performer senior dancer, Arianna Scott. First place for premier performer senior dancer, Marquita Williams. And first place for speech in division two, Lydia Wang. The principal, Miss Stephanie Van Long. Throughout the 2425 school year, the Darlington County School District Student Leadership Council met quarterly with Dr. Newman to provide insights and feedback from the student perspective. The council, composed of high school students across the district, bridged the gap between students and district administration to ensure student voices were represented in conversations about school and district priorities. Their input contributed to discussions on topics such as safety, branding, communication, and district initiatives. Their feedback was instrumental in performing district leadership and informing district leadership about the real-time experiences of students and identifying areas for continued growth and improvement. We'll call them by school if you would conform when your name is called. These are the members, again, of the 2425 Student Leadership Council. We'll begin with Darlington High School. Principal is Courtney Gurkey. The members are Zakaya McLean, Sean Odom, Michaela O'Neil, Caleb Heniston, and Jeronte Perkins.
Ready? All right, we can't look at her.
Stare at the mirror.
Okay, just look at mine.
And if y'all would just stand over to the side.
From Hart School High School, Zara Brusella. Shawnaiah Evans, Gavin O'Neil, Zachary Robinson, and Trenton Smith. Principal is Corey Lewis.
No, let me get you the thing. Congratulations.
From Lamar High School, Zan Chandler, Caleb Early, Montia Gregg, Dewayne McKnight, and Kendall Walton, Principal William Lenore. And from Mayo High School for Math, Science, and Technology, Mr. Beau Andrews, Nashela Kay, Ila Maris Ann Lee, Jeremy Spears, and Lydia Wang, Principal Stephaniea Lenore.
Before we take the group picture over, I just want to talk for a minute about our students, our awesome students with the advisory council. This is the first year that we have done this in the Darlington County School District, and we wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure, to hear from our juniors and seniors about what your experience has been. More importantly, though, what has impacted them and affected them on a daily basis? Because adults can talk all day long, but ultimately, how do our kids do? And so I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. You all gave me such joy this year, and you gave me great information on things that we can do to help improve. For our juniors that are going to be seniors next year, but for our seniors that are moving on, for those behind you, we talked about technology issues, you know, we talked about safety and security. We had a really tough conversation this past time, and you all were up to the challenge of it. And I just want to say thank you for being part of this. You were the first. There will never be another first, so you get to claim that from now on. And I can't wait to hear about the success for our seniors as you move on into the military and college, even if it is to be at the college. There's one that's at least in my college. But anyways, I'm so excited for y'all and to hear about, and those of y'all who are moving to work. So we're going to take one big picture, but can we give them another round of applause?
All right, if I can scoot you guys, there you go, there you go, okay? Can everybody see me? Ready? One, two, three. Perfect, thank you. Well, hold me on the bed.
And I know maybe people are studying for final exams or got extra classwork they're trying to squeeze in before they graduate, maybe. So if anybody would like to take this moment and step out, y'all can go ahead and head on to next steps.
Yes.
You're welcome to stay, but we will pause here for a sec while y'all.
Yep. Anybody that we recognize tonight, you are welcome to go home and study. But you have to go home and study.
We'll move on. Our next regular meeting, the next regular meeting of the Darlington County Board of Education is scheduled for June the 9th at 6 o'clock at the Darlington County District Office. Please note, we will not be having a work session in May, so our next meeting will be in June. That brings us to our consent items of our special call meeting on April 7th, our regular meeting on the 14th, and our April meeting on the 28th, which was a special call. And we have minutes for all those. Would y'all like to make a motion to include all of those for approval?
Madam Chair, I would be receptive to all three of them. Approval.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That leads us to our budget report. That budget.
I'll sneak back in, sorry. The budget, this is just the summary budget, and this is for the month of March. Nothing has changed much, but I did confirm with the county that our Fee and Loop funds, we did receive some funds that we were not supposed to receive, not a huge amount, but about $600,000. They found an issue with one of the new amounts, but they're updating that, so we'll see those numbers when we get April's information. We haven't got it yet. But you can look at the comparison from this year to last year, and we're pretty much where I would expect this to be. Did anybody see anything you had questions about? I think our primary focus tonight is the first reading of the budget, which isn't up just yet, but we've got our quarterly reports that we always put in here through March. Those are for information, as part of our policy that we do those every quarter.
On the monies we received that we weren't supposed to, are we giving that back, or what is the situation with that?
They will reduce our next allocation.
Okay, and how much was that?
Like $640,000. They had a coding issue of the Fee and Loop amounts that we talked about. We actually, one of the entities that had done some expansion, we were supposed to get additional funds, and we did get a good bit of additional funds, but they had not marked the municipalities, so we got their portion too. But anyway, I'd rather them fix it now than find it later, so they ensured me that everything is straight. But I've taken that into account in my projections for next year's budget, so.
And at the last report, you said that y'all, you were going to have a conversation with the county as far as, like, that we kind of had a, because sometimes these, like, just land in your lap, and you've got no kind of...
We did, and he's trying to pull some information. It's a convoluted calculation, but I've asked him to send me the data. They were also working on their budget. So I've actually talked to the county administrator multiple times, and he's working on sending me something so I can, he actually went over some of the numbers and gave me a little bit better idea of what we could expect for this next year, but he's going to try to give me some more concrete data so I can, kind of spreadsheet so I can project it a little bit better. It's hard to, and I understand it from his side, too, it's a difficult thing to pull out, because he's got all the different entities that have mileage that are included, so, but he's still working on that.
Anybody else have any questions about either the budget, the quarterly reports came in?
My question is not about that, per se. My question deals with the budget, first reading budget. Do I need to address that now or wait till later?
I think we'll wait on that. I think there's two more items, and then we're going to discuss that.
When we get to an action item.
All right.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll move us on to our action items. We have our CareSouth Rosenwall Foundation collaboration. Dr. Newman?
Chair Hassler, members of the board, members of our audience, this was a topic that was actually discussed at our last meeting, when we were at St. John's Elementary, our last regular board meeting. And the Rosenwall Foundation was standing alongside CareSouth as they presented a collaborative effort. As we all know, originally, the Rosenwall Foundation presented to the board, and after several months of having discussions, it became apparent that it looked like CareSouth being a great partner in Society Hill, already a huge presence in Society Hill as far as, you know, being part of it. But again, coming to an agreement of how the Rosenwall Foundation can be represented by the facility, but also how CareSouth can utilize that facility for the betterment of the community. And many different types of programs that were discussed at the last meeting. We have Joe Biddle from CareSouth and Jackie Slaton that are with us that were part of that discussion together, and I believe the board received that information very favorably. So tonight, we would like to put that into an action item, and it is the board's recommendation that we disengage the contract development from the Rosenwall Foundation and engage contract negotiations with CareSouth on the facility, but also the Rosenwall Foundation will be part of that development with CareSouth, that they have a collaboration that they have discussed and they're continuing to refine.
I'll take a motion for that action.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation to disengage contract development directly with the Rosenwall Foundation and enter into contract negotiations with CareSouth.
Can I get a second? Do we have any discussion?
My concern would be that in that negotiation, the agreement that Rosenwall be allowed to be sure that they are, have some involvement in that contractual agreement so that they will be able to have use of the facility as needed. I realize that we would be out of the picture, but I still think that there would be some guarantee in writing that they will be able to...
Ms. Slaton, y'all want to come up? Up, so we can...
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm Jackie Slaton, Executive Director of Darlington County Community Action, and also, I guess, the chair, ad hoc chair of the Rosenwall Acquisition Committee, soon to be disbanded, because we won't need him anymore, right?
And I'm Joe Biddle, Chief of Community Health with CareSouth. Our Director, Ann Tan Lewis cannot be here tonight, not here in her presence.
If I may speak?
Oh, absolutely.
I just, I, we weren't able to hear very clearly, that's why I'm standing up so I can maybe hear a little better. Sure, people have difficulty. But I want to be sure that Rosenwall, I understand the ownership will transfer to CareSouth, but that we also have a seat at the table insofar as we have an involvement, a partnership with CareSouth. I want the minutes of this organization to reflect that understanding so that there won't be any question about it later, not that we have any people who won't remember, but just in case, in case we drop off the earth, Joe, others will remember that and move forward.
And Ms. Lewis had mentioned that in our last meeting with y'all, too. The Rosenwall Foundation will have, I say, a part of this with us, and will have a place at Rosenwall, and will continue to work with them and the community there.
And I have an off-the-subject request. We are having our 60th anniversary for Darlington County Community Action Agency, and we actually are going to be installing on our wall, that 325 West Washington Street, an appreciation sign or plaque for the school board that brand us ownership of that building. So I will reiterate our request, at least electronically, that as many of the board members as can attend on Friday at 3 o'clock, we would appreciate very much your being there.
Any other questions or comments for them? All right, we'll proceed with the vote. We have a motion on the table, and a second. I'll take all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, that moves us over to our Harpschool Area 5K students. Dr. Newman, anyone want to?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the board, members of our audience, we had had a discussion at the last board meeting with regards to potential movement of students from the Southside 5K certain areas of attendance. This has been discussed over the past couple months as a possibility, and let me first say, we have our Southside contingent with us tonight, and I appreciate you all being here, and for those folks that spoke. Just know, this isn't, there's, all of us in this room are here for kids. So I know this is difficult information and difficult decisions, but ultimately, we're trying to make the best decisions we can for kids. I know people are very passionate about how they feel, and I absolutely honor that, but at the end of the day, I also have to make decisions for the future of what that looks like for our students. We have, obviously, we have Ms. Tony from Southside that is here, and Ms. Tony, I'm going to allow you to speak in just a minute, but we also have our three principals here as well from the feeder schools that are being discussed tonight. This is not an us against them. This is just about what do we do to take care of kids? And there may be different ways that we can take care of kids that maybe we all don't agree on, but that doesn't mean that we can't take care of our kids. So just know that I absolutely heard all of our speakers tonight and appreciate and honor what they said. Let me be, you know, first talk about some of the specifics to this. This would only be for the attendance zones for North Hartsfield Elementary School, Carolina Elementary School, and Thornwell School for the Arts. This would not include Bay Road Elementary students, because Bay Road currently has three, four, and five-year-olds currently... four, and five-year-olds currently in the building already in the Montessori program. And those students are all from the Hartsfield area. That is a lottery program that is chosen specific to the Hartsfield community. So they would not be part of this because of space limitations, because of the Montessori program. But we're currently serving four- and five-year-olds, three-, four-, and five-year-olds in the building right now. So, and it would only be 5K students that are zoned. 4K students, I know our Southside folks know this, but 4K students in the Darlington County School District is an income-based program only. So you have to meet certain income requirements in order to attend a 4K program in the Darlington County School District. That's like a lot of districts in the state of South Carolina. The majority of the districts, 4K is strictly income-based. And so, not everybody gets to participate in 4K in Darlington County because it is specifically In our Darlington communities and our Darlington schools, we have our schools, they're 4K through fifth grade. In our Lamar Spalding area schools, Lamar Spalding Elementary specifically, they are 4K through fifth grade. And so, again, this would not at all impact the 4K students, nor would it impact the special needs students that are 5K, 4K, and 5K, because a lot of those students are served by the same teachers. So they would not be impacted. And there, I think, one of our speakers that spoke, that Mrs. Hughes, who had been with us for 32 years as a teacher, bless you, thank you, but mentioned something about Southside closing, and that is absolute false information. There is no intention to close Southside. There's no way to be able to accommodate the students that we have at Southside, that all of the 4K students, plus the Bay Road students, plus the special needs students classrooms, the self-contained classrooms that we have, there's no way that can happen. And there is no intent in, on any discussions that I've had with the board to close Southside. There is a building plan that is on the district website, and that building plan discusses the potential of having two more elementary schools built in the Hartsfield community in addition to Bay Road, and that those three elementary schools could potentially serve all of the students in the Hartsfield community. But that is a plan, this is a 10-to-15-year plan that we're looking at. That is not anything that is on the immediate horizon for the school district. It takes a lot of money to build elementary schools. We just finished building an elementary school in Hartsfield recently. And so, I think, you know, when you look at the needs, for example, of a high school in the Hartsfield community, when you look at the needs of high schools in the Darlington community, as well as potential upgrades in Lamar, there's a lot of needs in the district. And so, you know, the notion that Southside, that we are, you know, somehow going to close Southside, that is not true. Southside, from my perspective, you all have done an excellent job on taking care of kids. And so, nobody's questioning the job, the care, the dedication that you've had to students. The perspective that I have and that many of the people involved with this decision have is that that opportunity for students to be in the same building with their peers, with more opportunities, is what is the driving force of this decision. So the fact that if you have a 5K student that is at Southside and a five, and a first grader or second grader or third grader that's at North Hartsfield, that's two trips that parents are making on different parts of the town. Having the 5K student in the same building with their brothers, sisters, whoever they may be, you know, going to school with, it's important that they, excuse me, are able to be transportation-wise, but also just knowing the people in the building, knowing the teachers. So it's not about these teachers are good and these teachers are not good. It's about what are the opportunities for children to be in the same space with their siblings, for parents to have less of a commute, and for opportunities to be out there. And so, the conversation took place with the other three elementary schools. Do you have space? That's first and foremost, because if you don't have space, there's no way we can even have this discussion. And so, we've identified that we have space. This will potentially impact six to eight classrooms. If you look at the first grade enrollments, and if you look at some of the 5K enrollments that are currently at Southside, it's going to be anywhere between six to eight classrooms. And so, between the three facilities, we'll be able to accommodate that. So, and the reality is, is that, you know, space is at a premium because of mobiles that we have on sites at all of our schools. We realize this. But again, there is nothing other than being able to have students in the same building with their siblings, but also with the administration, with the teachers that would be there. So what would that look like for teachers from Southside? Again, we would identify, how many classrooms are we talking? We would have to go by preregistration plus what our first grade enrollment numbers look like to start as a base. So, once we identified, let's, for example, let's say there were six classrooms, how would those teachers be chosen as far as who would go? First and foremost, it would be a preference. So we would ask all of the teachers, what's your preference? We would start off with that. And then, from preference, it would go to years of experience. And so, for example, if there was a possibility for two classrooms at Thornwell, and there were four people that would prefer to go to Thornwell, then that would come down to teaching experience in the district, as well as years of experience teaching in general. And so, that's how we would sort through all of this. Again, we understand the change. People say, why are you doing this now? Believe me, I didn't wake up, you know, two weeks ago and say, let's just throw everything and stir everything up. I recognize the time of this, but I also know that if we don't do this now, there's no way parents can react. Like, if you don't do this, if we don't make this decision tonight, then you don't make that decision at all for a while. Parents need to make decisions. There's a lot of parents out there that may not attend Southside, that may be interested in attending 5K next year. They need to know. The students and parents that are currently at Southside, they need to make that decision that may be moving back to their home school. So I don't think there's a great time of year to have this conversation. I think this conversation's going to be difficult no matter when you have it, whether it was in January, whether it's this month, whether it's two months from that from now. I mean, it's a difficult conversation that people are very passionate about on all sides. But I have to, I have to make decisions and make recommendations on what I feel is best for our students currently in the situations that they're in. And again, it's not a negative at all against Southside as much as it is a desire to put more students at an earlier age in the same building where they were stay, which is exactly what we have in our Darlington community and our Lamar community. So, it is my recommendation to allow those that are zoned for, the 5K students that are zoned for North Hartsfield Elementary School, Thornwell School for the Arts, and Carolina Elementary School to be able to attend those schools. So it would be current 4K students that would be able to attend those schools next year as 5K students.
Dr. Newman, you want us to put this down as a motion, and then we'll have it for discussion and give Ms. Tony a-
Sure.
All right, I'll accept a motion on this.
I make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation to move the upcoming 5K students from Southside Early Childhood Center to their own attendance areas of North Hartsfield Elementary, Thornwell School for the Arts, and Carolina Elementary School.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, is there any discussion? From here, we'll move into discussion.
She told you not to speak.
Yes, yeah, this is, Ms. Tony, did you, did you want to-
I'm going to let her speak first.
You want to let her speak first, or you want to-
Yeah. Ms. Tony, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendent, and community members. My name is Pat Tony, and I rise before you tonight with a heavy heart, but with a voice full of purpose. I speak to you not just as an educator, but as a product of the Darlington County School District. I have dedicated my entire professional life to this district. Ten years as an early childhood teacher, ten years as the district's early childhood coordinator, and for the past 25 years, I have had the privilege of serving as principal of Southside Early Childhood Center. I know this community, I know these children, and I know the power of early education done right. Southside Early Childhood Center is not just another school. It is one of the very few centers in this state dedicated exclusively to high-quality instruction for three-, four-, and five-year-olds. What we provide is foundation. We give students their very first classroom experience, shaping not only how they learn, but how they feel about learning. We build confidence, trust, and joy in school. We have children see themselves as capable and valued learners. Southside Early Childhood Center was born out of a bold and intentional decision by this very district. A decision to transform Southside Elementary, which was a K6 school, into a center focused solely, sorely on early learning. That vision was clear. Give our youngest students the best possible start, and we did just that. We honored that vision, we nurtured it, we watched it grow and bloom into something powerful and unique. So imagine our heartbreak, our confusion at the possibility of that vision being cast aside. I was serving as a president of the Darlington County Education Association when through the district's effort to desegregate our schools, teachers were being reassigned across the county. At that time, I was a teacher at Brockington Elementary, and I was one of those teachers being transferred. Thirty-five years ago, I stood before this very Darlington County School District Board to speak on behalf of our association. Members, mostly Black educators, who were filled with anxiety and uncertainty. They were being moved to unfamiliar schools with no say in the process. They were asking, will I have a job? Will I be accepted wherever I go? Why don't we have a voice in this? And while I tried to reassure them as their elected president, I shared their fear because I was experiencing it myself. And now, 35 years later, I see those same expressions again. Different people, but the same fear. This time, it's our Southside Early Childhood Center faculty and staff. What makes this even more troubling is that today, there is no guarantee that teachers will stay. Back then, you earned your position as state through retirement, but today, in the midst of a national teacher shortage, educators have options. They are leaving, not just the district, but profession, when they feel disrespected, degraded, and/or displaced. This uncertainty has been deeply unfair to our teachers. I've had new hires, bright, eager professionals, reach out to me in shock and distress. What does this mean for me? Do I need to get out of my contract? Why wasn't I told this before I signed? Will they release me if I don't want to go to another school? And the hardest part is, I can't answer them because nothing has been clearly planned or communicated. But I can say this, our teachers deserve better than to be moved around like chess pieces. They deserve respect, clarity, and a voice in decisions that affect their lives and careers. If we start sending educators to schools they didn't choose without input or explanation, we don't just risk losing a school, we risk losing people, good people, committed professions, and our children will pay the price. Southside is not a burden, it's a beacon, a special place where young children thrive and where teachers find deep purpose in those foundational moments. Some of you on this board have had children and grandchildren walk through our halls. You know what we stand for. You know what we prepare, how we prepare students, not just for the next grade, but for life. We are not just any school, we are Southside Early Childhood Center, and we are needed now more than ever. I'm asking, no, I'm imploring you, to reconsider any decision that would lead to the closure or re-purposing of this school. I'm asking you to pause, to listen, and to plan with us, not around us, to acknowledge that what we have at Southside Early Childhood Center is rare, valuable, and worth protecting. Let us not repeat the mistakes of the past. Let us honor the legacy we've built and protect the futures we are still shaping. Our children deserve better, our teachers deserve respect, and our community deserves transparency. Thank you.
Ms. Tony?
Ms. Tony?
They may have some questions for you. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Tony?
Ms. Tony, my only question would be this. You alluded to the fact of an option or reconsideration. Do you have a suggestion as to what you mean by that?
What I mean by that, we just found out about this two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, half the teachers had signed their contracts. Can you imagine the fear and uncertainty they face? You know, I know, I know change can be, is inevitable at some point. I believe in Southside Early Childhood Center because I know what we do for our children. But you don't do this at the last minute. You know, like I said, let's work together, not around us, to make the decision, the best decision for all of those children. You heard the mother talk about her special needs kids. Yes, special needs still going to be there, but we, we do inclusion, we send children to regularly ed classrooms, we prepare them, we want to move children out of exceptional aid, and we do that very well at our school. And so, when I said that, I'm like, why, why at this last minute? You know, I, without the contracts had gone out, and everybody is kind of, have one teacher still holding out, she's not signing a contract. And it's a during the teacher. But she said, I'm not going to be shipped around. Some people have that option, others don't. Yes, ma'am.
So, what I'm hearing you say is, when there were initial discussions about whether the other schools would be able to accommodate those children moving forward, you were not a part of?
Dr. Newman called me and told me that they were going to have a discussion on the board, which you all did in April. Then he called me and told me it was going to be on the agenda, and my question to him is, is this okay on the agenda? Is it for 26, 27 school year? He said, no, Pat, 25, 26. And I'm like, what? He said, I need for you to tell the teachers. I called a meeting that afternoon, and my God, the tears. I knew what they felt because- I knew what they felt because I've been there. You know, and that is not a way to treat professionals. Not a way. If that's what you're going to do, then we should have been at the table so we can be prepared. And like I said, educators today have options. People will leave if they don't feel like they're being treated right. And we don't want that. We build this district up, and we recruit people on that. Come home, it's, we're a family place and people love Darlington. But if the word get out that that's what we're doing to them, what do you think is gonna happen? It's gonna make it even worse to recruit teachers. I know I'm very passionate about this because I've been to Southside so long, but I'm passionate about children. And I hear the comments about what the parents, but we're about children. Okay, we're about children, not the adults. We work with them, and we're about doing what's right towards our teachers. That's my concern. That's my family over there. Have reared them up, some of them.
So you're saying, you know, the transparent, or the, the, a year from now, is this decision gonna be any easier?
It would be easier for those teachers.
Would the absolute, would the action itself be any easier?
It would not be easier for what we have built for the school as far as inclusion. And I know you're saying you're leaving Bay Road, which I have a problem with that. You're gonna leave that certain segment of population behind. Problem. But what I'm saying is, at least they would have been prepared and know what was coming. Two weeks. How long would it spend that long?
Something else, too, the parents.
Wait, can you excuse me? Hold on, you, you can't talk from the audience, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, so we're not gonna have a ban for back and forth. Thank you.
Yeah. And the parents, when I told my teachers, some of them are parents, yeah, the word got out. And I said, Dr. Newman, and he said, well, did you tell your parents? Yes, at my May Day, I mentioned it. They were surprised. And I said, but Dr. Newman? Apparently others knew way before we were ever talking. Because people were coming telling us. I'm like, how can that be? We didn't know. I'm saying, we're gonna do it, let's be transparent, let's make sure everyone is at the table. Any other questions?
From a logistics standpoint, how many mobiles are currently in use at, at Southside?
I have eleven. That's because of my special needs population.
And if we, how many classes did you say?
Between six to eight.
So would we be able to move those children out of mobiles into classrooms, into the, into the building?
Well, I heard Dr. Newman says six to eight kids going to the other school, six to eight teachers. I'm like, really? That's over what I have in, I only have eleven 5K teachers.
But I'm just asking, I mean, would those, would we be able to move those kids out of the mobiles into, into our classrooms?
Because you got 4K. If you move, if you move eight, if you move six, then I have 4K students, I have five special needs classrooms.
But we would be able to, we would be able to eliminate mobiles?
Not all of them.
But we'd be able to eliminate some mobiles?
Some.
Okay.
Not very many.
I'm just, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm just curious as, as the numbers.
But the schools that they are being sent to, the other elementary schools have mobiles too, so frankly, they're gonna use those with space.
Maybe can we get our, the incoming accepting schools, can we get the principals there to speak?
Um, I can have.
A representative?
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I have a question. You, you mentioned 3K, 4K, and 5K. You have 3K students?
Yes, I do, and special needs.
Epic.
And we take them in when they turn three.
Okay.
And that population is growing.
The special needs would stay?
It would.
How many special, how many special needs classes do you have?
Five. Could use a sixth.
We're, we're adding one this year. That one's being added, so.
Ms. Tony, any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Tony, I see your passion for your work and what you're doing, and I appreciate your staff coming and supporting you. And my concern is, how is this gonna affect the children as such a turnaround so quickly? And because they're used to coming to that school, and they're used to being in that environment. My concern is, you think that when they go out to the other schools, they're gonna be able to adapt quicker? They're gonna be able to adapt to those environments, and it's not gonna affect their learning?
It may. I don't know.
Because you said you had five special need classes.
Oh, yeah, but they're not moving to five special needs classes. And they're not moving Bay Road students.
What percent of our 5K comes in, and are only there one year?
Well, we serve, currently now, we have five 4K classrooms, and that is one hundred students. So about a hundred and fifty or so more, depends, are kindergarten students. I don't know how many is coming from Head Start for 5K. Um, there's some kids that come that have been home, or they come from private daycare. So we usually average about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty 5K students.
Okay, so about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty of them are there for one year, and then they leave.
So without the 5K, how many students would you have, just 4K and special needs, roughly?
Well, my 4K students were, well, I don't know how many of those that are gonna be going to the other schools.
Right.
So I won't have that many. I don't know, do you have the numbers on how many is going to school if they went back to their zones?
Plus the Bay Road.
What was, what were the numbers?
Plus the Bay Road. And we have a hundred and nineteen Bay Road students.
Hundred and nineteen Bay Road students, a hundred 4K, how many special?
Well, yeah, a hundred and nineteen Bay Road students that are going to first grade. I don't know what's gonna be, oh, I, I have not looked at the numbers of how many of my 4Ks is on for four and four Bay Road.
But none of the 4Ks will be moving, correct?
But for next year.
The next year.
See, that's it, we haven't even.
You have need 4K coming in.
Right, and so we don't know what those numbers are gonna look like. We don't know what the numbers are that's going to the other schools. That's what I'm saying, this is, we're coming back to school mid-July.
Tell me what you think we should do, tell me what your vision is for. You represent, we don't.
Postpone this until we can all sit at the table. Teachers will know what to expect. They would have a choice, because they didn't have a choice. They could have decided, well, you know what, this is happening, I'm gonna apply for a transfer at another school. Because we want to respect our educators and keep them in our district. Because I heard Dr. Newman said that teachers, the plan is they will have an option. But what if the options that they have, they don't want to accept, what are we gonna do? They said, well, I just want to sit at Southside, I don't want to go to any of these options. What's the plan for that?
Any other questions, Ms. Tony?
Thank you, Ms. Tony. So, go ahead.
But my question is for the school board and Dr. Newman.
But can we, I, I'd like to, can we use some of the other principals, and then we get all the principals out? Can we get a representative?
So, um, while we have a representative from our other schools, Ms. Watford, would you at least come up and talk for a second about, um, how you see the benefits of having the 5K students?
Well, I mean, if we, if, you know, if they come to us, we welcome them. If it's a transitions, it would be nice. Um, as far as getting them in early, um, but, you know, and then as far as the families, whenever we're talking about them as much, about the kids. Um, as far as the special needs, we do have a lot of special needs at North Hartsburg that come to us from, on Southside. So that transition happens every year. So, you know, we do have transition, if they're there a year, then come to us, I think, be some benefits. So, um, yeah, I mean, we can see it as a, as a positive, whatever happens. So if y'all have any, you know, any specific questions. But I know that, um, we have, I think, last year, in the past, I think we have about sixty-seven, I think, I think last year. So I'm not sure, we never know the numbers every year, for sure.
Sixty-seven what?
Students that can, yeah, so about three, five of our four classes, you know, not quite, so. And then we have special needs students also at North Hartsburg.
What time, what age do they come to you for special needs, first grade?
Um, special, yes, all the special needs, the self-contained classes and the first grade. They have their first graders when they come.
So can you speak to me, I mean, why, from your standpoint, you know, why the zone schools, why are you wanting these kids back into your building?
Um, well, I mean, as far as back into the building, we really, they transition usually after one year, as you were asking. Um, sometimes we do have some, um, plans in place for our students, maybe with disabilities that maybe got started, and then we try to pick that up, so sometimes that piece, we start over with, or they're trying to add on to. So that would be a benefit to get those kids qualified. Just the community in general, the teachers, the planning with the teachers, the vertical planning, so some things like that would be great.
Any questions for Ms. Watford? Thank you. Ms. Sanders, Thomas, you got, you had some questions, Dr. Newman?
Well, yeah, and I just, I guess, I have questions, not just with Dr. Newman, but questions, period. And I heard Ms. Tony say, um, when asked what she would like to see, and she said postpone. Uh, how difficult would it be to postpone? And my question is, a couple of questions. I've not heard any major positives to the children being moved other than an opportunity to be in the same building with their peers, or administrators and teachers there. To me, that's not, there needs to be more of a, um, positive as far as what would be achieved by moving these children. Other thing that I personally have a problem with, and I'll tell you why. When I went out and advocated to come on the school board, I made a promise to my constituents that I would be a voice for them, their children, the teachers, the administrators, and I would go to them and discuss their issues and concerns. No thanks may always go the way that we would like for them to go, but they would be provided an opportunity to share with me their thoughts and concerns. And from what I'm hearing, what I'm used to, or think things should be, is decisions should be made after discussions, not before. And I blatantly asked Ms. Tony, when did you find out about it? She said, two weeks ago. Now, discussions were made before two weeks ago because the schools where these children were supposed to go, they had to be approached or in some kind of discussion about if they would be able to take the children. I don't want personally, you discussing something that's gonna affect me, and I don't have a voice in. You're gonna make a decision for me, something that's gonna benefit my child, my livelihood, but I'm not given an opportunity to share my thoughts and feelings. You know, parents, teachers, Ms. Tony, the community. I believe that if not a forum, discussions, this is what we're thinking about doing. Provide us with some insights and some feedback. That's not to say, you know, this is how it's going to be, but I have been given an opportunity to share, you know, why now? And what does it really benefit? You know, I think these are crucial questions that we need to consider before we make these kind of decisions. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Kelly?
Um, yeah, so, Pete answered a lot of them, but a couple things I want to clarify. So, well, there, well, first of all, because I, I mean, I clearly don't know the answer to this. Do contracts guarantee a school?
They do not, and so, based on policy, GCK is professional staff assignments. All personnel are employed by the district, not a particular school. So every employee of the school district is an employee of the school district. They work at locations. Obviously, we have attachments to locations, but the reality is, everybody works in the school district.
How often, I mean, is, is that something that happens every ye, I mean?
It does.
Like, what, how, how frequently does that happen?
Every year, we have movements of students and classes across the district where we have to rebalance based off of a lower enrollment in one school, and they'll gain, they'll, they'll lose a teacher, and, but yet, there'll be another school that has a gain, and that teacher will move to that other school. So we, we have movement every year with teachers for rebalancing purposes where the needs are.
Back to exceptional ed, so no, no changes to that, but still, those exceptional ed students all go to their home school at first grade, right? But they can start at Southside as early as 3K?
They can.
Okay, and, all right, no changes to that, okay. And, so what does happen if nobody chooses to go? Like, nobody makes that, like, that's our, like, yeah, that's my preference to go.
Yes.
So it's kind of twofold. Number one, is there any anticipated lost positions? And number two, what, what happens if nobody prefers that?
Yep, so there'll be no lost positions, period. There, there will not be any positions that are eliminated because of this. And quite frankly, we may wind up adding some positions because, um, the potential for students to start earlier, we may have some folks that are, for example, in homeschools, that are choosing other options right now. They may choose to start with us as a kindergarten, as a four, as a 5K student, yes. So there's the potential for, for that to happen. So, yeah, there, there will not be any elimination of positions. And then as far as, let's say, again, if we had six classrooms, I'm just using that number, and that's six teachers, and all six wanted to go to the same school, again, it would come down to years of experience in the district and years of experience teaching under a regular teacher contract. So, um, that, that's the way any situation like this is handled. That's when we, um, you know, had the situation with our new elementary schools that we built, and we came together. It was always based off of years of experience and years of experience in the district.
Is, do you anticipate, I mean, like, if you had to put a timeline on down, I mean, I, down the road, closing Southside, I mean, what do you, what would you, if you just had to put a projection on that? I mean, what, what is the ultimate end goal?
Well, I, I think the facility plan that we have Well, I, I think the facility plan that we have, that's on the website, talks about the Hartsville community having three 4K through fifth grade buildings that would all have equal enrollment, approximately 650 to 700 students. So, that, that is a proposal that's out there, that the architects, based off of the age of the buildings, based off the need to build buildings, for example, whether it be Southside, or Carolina, or Thornwell, at some point in time, those buildings, kids can't stand them, because they're not going to be able to be maintained past a certain point, because of the age of the buildings. That's exactly why we wound up building other buildings, is because the age of the buildings, as much as anything else. So, there will come a time where the need, it, it doesn't matter whether we do anything with Southside, or we don't do anything with Southside, the age of the building and the systems that are in that building are gonna dictate that the board will have to do something for that facility. And the reality is, that people are not building schools, I think our architects told us, they're not seeing schools being built for elementary, for anything less than 500 students at this point in time. So, I say all that, but then there's also the finance piece and the money piece to this, which is, we don't have, currently, we don't have that type of money to make that type of change, if that change was approved by the board to do. And that's a board decision that they would have to make.
And the reason, I'm sorry, and last question, and the reason for not sending the Bay Road students is strictly room in the facility?
It is. So, when we originally built Bay Road, we did not have the Montessori program in place. The decision to put the Montessori in place was made after the school had been planned for and built. And so, that became an increase to the building, as new Montessori classes were added for higher grades, but also, we're accommodating three, four, and five-year-old students in the Montessori. So, all of those students are from the Hartsville community.
One?
This is really not a new issue, per se. This is something we've talked about, not recently so much, but over the years. I know Dr. McCutcheon, who was the principal in Hartsville for many years, he advocated this, I mean, several years ago, that we do this. I'm not against doing it. I do kind of wish we had come out with this earlier, to have a little more time on it. Other than that, I mean, I think it's something that needs to be done, but the timing, I think, is, is, you know, real important, we do it the right way.
Charles?
Madam G, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a policy, I'm not a policy carrier, and I'm not too sure about, you got a motion on the floor. However, I would like to consider withdrawing, with all the unknowns that are variables that are out there, that, that motion be tabled, or that we withdraw it, and deal with it after some more discussion. Now, I know the issue is, schools will be opening, and I realize that we gotta do something. But I don't know that this is the time to necessarily do it. That's it.
So, you're making, yeah, I weave and do that.
You'd have to make a motion to amend, and then the amendment would have to carry.
Well, if that's the case, I would make a motion that we amend the motion to, um, continue this discussion with further until, until a later date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to amend with the second.
I'm confused, we don't have to vote on the first one at all?
Well, we gotta vote on this.
You gotta vote on this one first.
You gotta vote on this first, whether to amend the motion.
So, what's the, what are we, amend, what is the motion exactly? I don't completely understand.
My motion would be to amend the present motion to, uh, because of the uncertainties and variables that are out there.
Basically, you're, you're, you're making a motion to table?
To table our, to table the motion.
To table the motion.
Originally had.
But is there, I mean, do we need to have a timeline on that? I mean, I.
When are you tabling it to?
And what are the uncertainties, I guess?
Well, if we table it, in reality, it probably will need to be tabled until next year. However, that's, that's not really, I don't think, the intent. I think what we need to do is to have more discussion about this, have some, some, some discussion with, uh, the, the parties that are involved.
All right, you wanna clarify, you wanna clarify your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so clarify.
I'm not a policy carrier.
I know, so, you're, you're making a motion to table the original motion until?
Until such time as we have had time to have discussion with, with all parties involved.
To determine maybe major positives associated with the move.
I'm, to do what?
Um, to see.
We, we just got to have, we've, we've either got, you got to make the motion, or he's got to make the motion. So, Charles is making the motion, so Charles has got to make the motion.
Okay, my motion is that we table the present motion until such time as there has been ample time to have discussion with all parties involved, and come back, um, to bring it back up for discussion.
All right, Ms. Thomas, you seconded that motion?
I'm seconding.
Okay. Do we have, we have a mo, a motion to the motion, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion about that?
Yeah, I, I just, again, the ti, I mean, I think that, I mean, if ultimately, we're gonna bring this up quickly again, we're, we're taking away time for people to prepare versus ripping the Band-Aid off. I mean, you know, I mean, it's, I don't know that it's gonna get to be a better situation.
Any other discussion about the amendment? Motion to amend. All right, on the, but, on the motion to amend, all in favor?
Of the motion.
Of the motion to amend. So, the motion does not carry. So, now, we're back to our original motion.
It was 4-4.
4-4 doesn't carry.
It just stays.
All right, so now, we're at, back to the original motion. Do we have any other discussions on the original motion?
So, if this is voted down in this vote, when, when if, can it be brought?
Next meeting, if we want to.
Really?
In the next meeting, you would be able to implement.
Except, yep, I mean, I think we're gonna limit the ability of, of the receiving schools to prepare for incoming students. Plus, parents need to know.
So, can we, can a motion be made to postpone it?
We, we just made that motion.
That was a motion just now.
And didn't carry.
Well, I'm saying a specific time.
A specific.
Specific time.
You have to go on the original motion now, which you have to do.
Correct. Okay, let's, let's, let's go ahead and move on to a motion to the, a vote on the motion that is on, the original motion, which, Lynn, you want to repeat that motion, just so, just for clarity for everyone?
Um, it was to accept the administration's recommendation to move the 5K students that are zoned for North Hartsville, Thornwell, and Carolinas to home school for next year.
All right, we had, we have a motion on that, we had a second, we've had a discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Just to move it.
Yep.
Yeah.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, that moves us on to our budget report for first reading.
Budget and budget, um, for the school year 2526, the first run of this, the revenue projection is $131,500,000. That is taken into consideration the increase in revenues that we saw this year, that were not in our budget last year, and increase in our millage by 3.03%, which is the CPI plus growth, that's 6.3 mills, and that came, came to around $1.3 million in additional revenue. Our fee and lieu, as we've discussed several times, has gone up, and I have put a provision in there, I've adjusted it for the overpayment that the county administrator and I talked about. The, um, our new school tax credit, per the revenue of fiscal affairs office, we get a letter from them, giving us an estimate, and those numbers went up about $700,000, and all the taxes and calculations within there. Now, I did, I did send a message, or sent an email to the State Department CFO and the Finance Director today, asking, you know, we talked about our ADM numbers being off for the 45-day, and they're recalculating 135-day, which those will be correct. So, she responded to me this afternoon, and said that they were finalizing the current year 135-day data, and that they were updating the fiscal year 26 projections, and they hope to get that to us by the end of the week. So, if anything significant changes, then we'll adjust the budget and send it out before we do second reading. We have public hearings scheduled for June 5th, for anyone who wants to come ask questions about the budget. We do that every year, and that's part of the passing of the budget policy, and those places will be advertised. The additional expenditures, if you, for the new board members, if you look at page four, we take the prior year budget, and then we, um, list any new items that we will be using the new funds for. Now, this year, we, our expenditures did exceed our budget, so that first $2.8 million is to take up, um, to reconcile that amount. And that's mainly from, where we issue bonuses, we don't budget the bonuses, so there was just shy of a million dollars in bonuses that were given this year, and some substitute overages on the budget, and, and those, you know, those happen. We are actually looking at that to, you know, give the principals more information on, you know, how we can, what we can do to cut back on our sub-budget. And then, we've talked about the increase in our special ed, um, population, and, you know, those, those expenses have to be covered. So, if you start with, um, our proposed budget includes a $1,500 per sale increase over our prior scale, the State Department, that seems to be the, what they're landing on is a $1,500 per sale increase, so we did that, plus a step, and that will cost the district with fringes, $2,276,000. We use the current year budget prep and calculate those numbers, so they're usually really, really close. I told you at the work session, that I did several scenarios. I also added another scenario, and we did a $2,000 per sale increase, just to see how much it would cost us, and that would cost us another $552,000. So, this budget includes the 1,500 per selling, because that, we, we were able to get it balanced with some of the requests that principals made. For other personnel, we're proposing a 2.5% base increase with a step, and that cost us $1.3 million. The health insurance, right now, what is being, what's on the legislative docket, and looks like it's going to be passed, originally, they were gonna pass along an increase to the employees, but they got rid of that, and they're giving the employers an increase of 4.6%, and that's the 213,000. That increase doesn't start till January, so that's just a happy year calculation. Dr. Newman gave you a list of personnel requests, the special ed we already had on the list, the 400,000, that's the estimate for salary with fringe. The, our law enforcement, they met with Dr. Newman and Mr. Shuler, they requested some additional funds for equipment and for paying the SROs, so we've got $181,500 included in the budget, that would give them a $38 per hour payment, versus, we pay now $35 per hour, and we would increase their equipment allowance per officer from $2,000 to $3,000 per officer. The, there's another item in the legislative proposals right now, and it's to increase the paid parental leave from six weeks to 12 weeks. So, that would cost us, if we look at how much we paid this year, this year, we've had a little over $100,000, we've estimated that that could cost us as much as $200,000, but that's, that's a hard one to estimate. And then, the personnel additions, the remaining balance of 1.1 million, I think Dr. Newman provided you with a list of the requests, and a list of what we're recommending the proposals be, and it's just shy of that. So, if you add the special needs 400,000 to that 1.1, he left me a little bit on the table. So, again, when, right now, the legislative body, they sent out something today, saying that they, they have looked at the weighted pupil unit. So, the South Carolina Association of School Administrators did a great job of identifying how distorted the calculation looked. And we didn't think they were gonna do anything this year, but they have put a proposal on here to change the weighting a little bit, and they plan to meet on May 28th. So, as usual, we won't know anything concrete until the end of May, but there have been years when we didn't know anything concrete the end of June, so I'm hopeful that we'll get better numbers. Is anybody, you know, first reading is, is the formality, we, we put it out there, we let people ask questions, you ask questions, and then when we get more solid, we'll adjust those and, and make adjustments as needed.
So, I, my question was, was gonna be in reference to the, um, the proviso and the weight issue.
They, they are looking at it, and it would decrease the amount that's allocated to charter schools, it would make it a little, it's not a, it's not a 100% fix, but it was something they proposed to help until they could put together a committee and actually really review it, and come up with a solid plan. So, it's better than what we thought, but it's still not gonna be perfect. But at least they are looking at it, and that's encouraging, because we didn't think they were gonna do anything. And they haven't yet, but they are talking about it, so that is very encouraging.
Just a couple of quick comments, too, that you have been conservative in your estimates.
I, I have. We still don't have the, the new 135-day ADM numbers, as I've talked about a while ago, because, you know, and until I get those... about a while ago, because, you know, and until I get those, I mean, I've added in what I think our additional amount will be, but they, we, we were cut $1.4 million when the 45-day ADM went through. And that showed that we had lost 221 pupils in the average day of membership, when in reality, in the year, we only lost 98. So we should get some of that money back and that's what I contacted them today for. I actually contacted them yesterday and replied to that, to find out when, you know, just to make sure that they knew that our 45-day calculations were incorrect.
Renee, and it's probably in here somewhere and I may have overlooked it. So where is that going to put our starting salary for a beginning teacher?
Hang on a second.
We're at 48.4 right now, so that would be $1,500 on top of that.
The reason I'm asking, because if the, if the governor's proposal in, in the budget is to have it at 40, I think it's at 48, I think he's proposing 48.5.
It would be a 49.9.
No, have it, no. Operate with a microphone, let's see. Our starting. Mr. Goddard. We were at 48.410.
Yep.
And we added $1,500, so.
So that's 49.910.
Yep, 49.910, that's right. Late in the day for my little friends, so.
Where would that set us in the PD?
Well, I got the information from our neighbors. They are adding a $1,500 increase to their scale as well. But their scale, their starting scales were lower than ours, so that puts them at 40, it'll, it'll be 48.5. Now.
So there's a variance, right?
There's a var, there's a variance. The teacher's salary scale is not uniform. I've, I've talked about this before. There's no algebraic reasoning behind the teacher's salary scale. I've never figured it out. No one's figured it out. And ours, we, we tried to make it a little more uniform. So we did 2% increments between our local additions. It is actually a lot better, but the, the state minimum, there is no, there is no percentage, exact percentage between these sales. I, I talked to the, the guy that did the, Mr. Bailey, that did the presentation about the weighted pupil unit and, you know, he said, yeah, I know, there's no, there's no reasoning for it. But, so ours, we have, we have higher starting salaries than our neighbors and we have higher upper level, but there's places in the middle when, where their scales are higher than ours. So I.
Yeah, but the starting and, and the, and the.
The starting, but the, you know, the, the starting and the ending. So if you look at our beginning and ending, yeah, we do, we did pay.
But the reason I'm asking, because I'm, I'm concerned with Chuck, is recruiting. If that's going to be a recruiting tool.
Yeah.
Then we've got to be competitive.
Well, we're higher in first year, first year pay, but it would be, it would be very almost impossible for us to be higher all the way across the board.
I'm talking about, what you say across the board, you mean?
Every, every level.
Every level.
Zero years.
Yeah, I get that, right.
From a sheerly marketing standpoint, is there anything to prevent us to say that we're, we would start, if they add the 1,500, that we just go ahead and start at 50,000? That's $90 more. But that tells us now that when we market, we were at 50,000.
We could, yeah. And there are several, I've got, I've got to compare some of the same school districts that I did the salary scale study with that are our similar size. And there were several of them that are, were already at 50. And thus, you know.
I mean, that just seems like you hear that a lot different than you hear 49.9. Forty, excuse me, 49.10.
That's a good PR, I can tell you that right now.
Pardon?
PR would be great.
I mean, is that, that extra $90 worth of?
We, we can calculate it. We can, we can calculate that.
Yeah, I can, I can increase that. I mean, I would propose increasing them, I mean, it is, it's a lot easier to do it across the board, one, one dollar amount, but yeah, we can do that.
So we'll explore that for second reading.
Yep. I, I have 8,000 different scenarios for the salary scale, so it won't take five minutes to, yeah, recalculate.
Could you go in a little bit?
We did 2% over last year, 3% over last year, 1,500, 2,000. We did a lot of different scenarios, trying to, trying to find the right one.
Could you go in a little bit deeper for me where we are over 2.8 million this year and our initial budget will have to increase by 2.8 to accommodate for the 2.8 overage?
We were also over our revenues by 5. something million dollars. So we're still, we still have a surplus this year, $3 million.
So, so when you said that we have 2.8 in this budget to, to cover our overages.
Yeah.
Then if we, if they're already covered by the 5 million that we got in revenue, how is, how are we, how do we have to accommodate for that in?
All right, so.
This budget?
Nothing's one-time. So, so the way this, this model, and Dr. Tim's created this, I didn't. The way this model is, we start with last year's budget and then we, we take the difference in the new revenue and last year's budget and we allocate. If I don't include the fact that we spent $2.8 million more this year here, then we could be $2.8 million over next year. But our revenues are also higher and I've increased our revenues, but, but I've increased our revenues, um, yeah.
But that 2.8 was predominantly in one-time spending?
Not necessarily.
You said 1 million of it for bonuses?
Well, some of it was substitute overages, some of it was special ed with fringes, so some of it's salaries. And those are recurring.
So what percentage of the 2.8 is recurring and what was a one-time?
Well, the bonuses were 925,000. So you could say about a million dollars of it was non-recurring unless you decide not to do a bonus issue. So.
If I'm understanding you correctly, that's just so you can, but balance.
Your budget.
Correct.
Like that's not, that's not that, it's not that we were short 2.8 million dollars that should.
No, no, I, I mean, I understand.
We're just having about, like, that's what you have to add in in order to balance.
If I don't take that in consideration.
Then we would be over by 2.8.
Yeah.
The next year.
Yeah.
So does that mean that we are then, because I mean, every year we come up, around Christmas and we get, we talk about bonuses.
We never.
And what, and what seems to me what you're budgeting in is then a line item for, if, if we are, so I, I mean, I mean, we may not always have.
No.
That kind of money to give bonuses.
What I'm trying to do is make sure that we don't overallocate for, for money that we've spent this year. So I can go back and recalculate and, and dig back in once we get this year's new, I mean, once we get this year's actual numbers.
I mean, I understand, at the end of the day, we, we have more revenue than we had expenditures, but then I.
I'm projecting that.
Correct.
It still may. So as soon as we have real numbers, as soon as we know exactly, like, I just looked at April today and we spent $9 million. I'll go back and calculate and revisit my current year revenue expenditure projections and make sure. So that number could change.
But, but in essence, what you're, what you're saying, Ms. Hassler, is?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we're accounting for anything that we spent over above what we projected, like our budget last year, right? You have a budget and ideally you are exactly on budget. You don't have any more money. You don't have any less money. Reality is, you're, you've got both every single year and what, how does it wash out? But to your point, what you're saying is essentially you may have even less expenditures.
Yeah.
Based off of, if we're only talking about one-time expenditures that we may not do again, you potentially could have less expenditures. You're still going to have the increased revenues, so you've got more. Right. I think that's, that's the point we're trying to make is it just depends on what you're looking at. But, but at the, at the end of the day, on June 30th, you know, the target is zero. The reality is, we're trying to be within plus or minus 2.5%, which is roughly around $3 million if I'm not mistaken. So.
It is. And last year, when we did the budget, it was a rollback year and we had already passed our budget and then we calculated and so the, so the revenues are higher because they were unknown. So hopefully, what I'm trying to do is get closer. And, and I'll look at, I'll look at that, dig into it when we get final numbers. When we get to the end of May, it'll be a whole lot easier. And I'll see what, what non-recurring funds are on that we spent this year. So.
Any other questions about budget?
It's a work in progress lately. My, my, my team is still going through all the expenditures for the year, so.
All right.
Make a motion. Will we approve it for first reading?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor of the budget, the 2025, 2026 budget for first reading? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Newman, that moves us on to the superintendent update with you.
Chair Hassler, members of the board, members of our audience, I would like to mention a couple of recognitions before I get to our strategic plan, goal areas. Had the pleasure today of celebrating Walker Brown, who is a Hartsfield High School senior who was chosen as the state South Carolina Work-Based Learning Student of the Year. The best in the state. So very own Walker Brown. He actually has been doing his internship through the Key to Career Program at Nucor. Nucor had a wonderful celebration for Walker. There was probably 30 of the workers in the room that were there to celebrate him, plus his family. The Department of Education Workforce Division is, so this is part of the Department of Ed plus workforce development with the state. But Darlington County has the state Work-Based Learning Student of the Year. So congrats to Walker Brown. We'll be doing a lot more on that information, but that just happened this afternoon.
How's that determined?
So.
We have to, like, submit?
Yep, yep, yep. So students are submitted and it talks about what they actually did in their internship. They have to have references.
I'm not teacher of the year.
Recommendation letters, yep.
My recommendation amendment to panel.
Yep, yep. So Walker Brown was also chosen the Harbor Freight Student of the Year for the PD region earlier as well. So he, he is doing quite well.
And where is he headed?
He is currently a welder and that's his certification is what he's gotten from welding. And so his instructor was there as well. But yeah, welders at Nucor make a significantly large amount of money. So he has got a bright future ahead of him. And he will continue to take classes at Florence Darlington Tech as he moves forward as well. Dr. Shannon Flowers was chosen as the Rotary Club Citizen of the Year for the Hartsfield Rotary Club. So again, Dr. Flowers, congrats. She's directly responsible for managing the programs that Walker is in, as well as our Ascend program for eighth graders and our Career Time Tuesday for fifth graders. So shout out to Dr. Shannon Flowers for that. We have a student from Pate Elementary School, first grader Billy Mitchell, was first place in the Art Fields Contest. You know, that, that is down in Lake City that they have annually. And he was chosen first place student choice. So Billy Mitchell, first grader at Pate, congratulations. We have Amber Dees, who is the Assistant Principal at Thornwell School for the Arts. She was chosen as this year's South Carolina Assistant Principal of the Year with the South Carolina Association for Black School Educators. Congratulations to Amber.
What school was she?
Thornwell School for the Arts. And a couple other appreciations, you know, I've been trying to catch up on the appreciations because as soon as I recognize somebody, somebody else emails me and says, hey, you forgot about us. I want to make sure, May is National Speech Language Hearing Month. So this is for all of our speech therapists and hearing professionals as well. Shout out to them. And then Bus Driver Appreciation Day was on April 22nd, which happened to be our spring break. And so we did not properly acknowledge our bus drivers and I want to make sure to publicly acknowledge them and all of the, the work that they do. But most importantly, that's who our students see at the beginning of the day and, and who they see at the end of the day. And yes, I will send an email out about that as well. And so just highlighting a few things, looking at the goal of student success. At Brockington Elementary School, they had several of the Beta Convention winners that you heard about tonight. They had two first place winners and a second place winner. They also took a trip to Vanguard to tour the facility and learn about how to manage their money. So DCIT, they had 16 students that participated in the first annual Coker and Actus High School Idea Challenge this month. It was a competition which students worked in groups to develop and pitch a business plan to judges in an effort to win a scholarship to Coker. Hartsfield High School, they had boys track at one region. They had boys, a boys tennis player selected the first team all-region. They had IB diploma students present to their, present their extended essays to their peers and faculty and staff this month. And then their teacher cadet class was heavily involved in our schools throughout the district this month as well. Lamar High, Mr. Wright, the Lamar High School Band Director and Lamar Silver Powerhouse Band received an excellent rating at the most recent SCBDA Concert Performance Assessment. Lamar Spalding recognized students who made the highest gain on their winter reading and math map assessments, as well as students who were caught doing something kind in the building. They were recognized for that as well. Pate Elementary did an attendance madness bracket. This is a play on March Madness for basketball, but they did an attendance madness bracket and each week classes moved on if they had a higher percentage of attendance for the week. They crowned their classroom winner. I got a shout out Ms. Watson's class who beat out Ms. Edwards' class the last week with a 95.5% attendance rate. That's a neat idea. Rosenwald Elementary had 100% of the school's third graders scored meets or exceeds on math in their spring math and 82% meets and exceeds in ELA. Spalding Middle had the Be Pro, Be Proud program, which visited to introduce the eighth graders to new career opportunities. That is a traveling program that's out there. St. John, John celebrated their students that met their grade, their grades, in grades three through fifth, but met their math goals with a candy cart. And they had their third quarter honors and awards program, as well as their Beta Club field, field trip to the museum in Columbia. And so that's just a sampling of the student success that took place last month. And that's everything I have for the superintendent's report.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Newman? Ms. Thomas, you know, start us out with a board member input.
I think tonight I just wanted to give a shout out to the teachers for, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, right?
Yes.
I might, unless time flies, so maybe I have the dates wrong, but. Since our last meeting, there was Teacher Appreciation Week. So shout out to all teachers making difference in, in kids' lives every day. So thank you for all that you do, for my kids and everybody else's kids too.
Mr. Jeffords?
Just a shout out to all award winners and appreciate what they do, all our teachers also.
Ms. Corrigan?
I'm just blown away every time I hear Renee Douglas do her reports. I mean, you're doing an outstanding job. She says she's a morning person. I can't even imagine the amount of things that you have to juggle to get to the point where. where you get this budget done. And I sincerely appreciate all your hardworking catching errors that have been made outside of the school district and just thank you very much.
Ms. Corr.
I don't know how I feel tonight right now. I would just like to say, you know, I appreciate all of you all, the SNL team and everything y'all have done this year, because y'all have done a great job. And I also feel sad because I saw the heart of Ms. Toni. And she put a lot of years in this school, a lot of her time. And I know she loved her staff and her people. And I know y'all hearts are broken on tonight, but you always still got a voice. Remember that. You always still got a voice. And you also got to vote. Just like we vote, y'all can vote too. If you don't think we're doing what's right for your children and we're not putting your children first, you got a voice too. And I'm hoping that this year ends up well for all of us. I pray for you and y'all stay strong, because everything, it may work out. You never know how things work out, but sometimes change is good. But y'all just be, just be prayerful, because that kind of touched me tonight when I saw y'all faces over there. And I pray that your faith will not fail you. Keep your faith up. And I enjoy my year being here this year. I enjoy a lot of new things and new ideas, but I'm always hoping for better for everybody. I'm hoping for better for the staff, for the children, for the ones that work with us, these kids every single day. I know what they pour into this school district. And I'm hoping for better for all of you all. So I pray that your faith will not fail you, just hang in there with us. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
I just have a couple things. One, I was speaking at Lions Club the other month and just want to give a shout out to our nurses who assist our Lions Club members in doing the vision screenings that they do. They were highly, highly complimentary of our nursing staff that works with them as they come and do those screenings. So just want to thank them and shout out for that. Also, along with Ms. Carrary, we attended the Lamar High School inaugural, very first biomedical, the students who graduated their first year who've completed that program from freshman year on to senior year. And it, listening to the projects that they had done and the work that they had put in was, was just really, really inspiring and I look forward to watching that program develop and move forward. So thank you for the efforts that y'all put into that. Dr. Newman, for bringing that program into, around for us. And actually, Mr. Thomas was there, who was the principal when this program was started. He came back for the presentation, so that was really nice. So greatly appreciated that. And that's all I have for that. Move on to personnel actions. I'll take a motion to approve the personnel actions.
I'm moving. You got a second?
Second.
All in favor of the personnel actions?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll now have time for an executive session. I'll take a motion for executive session for, on personnel matters. I'm going to move into executive session to discuss personnel matters. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. To executive session.
It's on y'all, babe.
Spend money is all I can say.
You're on. Okay. Can we get a motion to come out of executive session?
We can't.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are out of executive session.
I want to adjourn.
Well, just before we adjourn, no actions were taken, no votes were taken, and now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Adjourn.